Jennings. Mr. DiBiase.
Here.
Mr. Deegan.
Here.
Ms. Menard. Father Jay.
Here.
Back in there.
Yes.
We are going. The Constitution Massachusetts General law chapter thirty A, section twenty F. Any member of the public may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting. A member of the public who wishes to record a meeting must first notify the chair, must comply with the reasonable requirements regarding audio or video equipment. Instead of us trying to chair is not to interfere with it.
Ms. Menard.
Um, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the states of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Get a motion to approve the March ninth, two thousand twenty-three minutes. In a second, seconds, all in favor, aye, opposed? One point four student report, Ryan and NATO.
I'm Ryan native, I'm an electricity and I'm a junior. So we're going to go on around school. On March thirty-first, student president Josh Ramos and vice president, if I want that much of master state house for student gap. Josh and Cody were able to advocate for important issues that students are getting back. Spring fourth authorities are going well. Protract undefeated and work track has one loss. Baseball's free enough and softball's also free enough. They could travel to Canada Park on Sunday, April second, for decades. Students are also excited for upcoming class trips where the juniors are going six flags, sophomores to Kendrick Lake Park, freshmen are going to Waterways. And also students are excited for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody, uh, the citizen vote.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that our citizen vote is fine. Check, all set, all good, our language is fine, you don't have to change it.
Okay. Thank you. The two point one MSBA.
Description. All right, so we have, um, discussion of the contract, as everybody knows, we're just finishing up. This kitchen has been very involved. Right now, uh, we do have online, I believe, uh, gentleman from Hut, insurance carry.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, if I may, he can speak, and he does have a complete, um, slideshow, but I think I just want to report out to you that both Tim Alex, who has worked, uh, very diligently on this as of late, um, Paul Kitchen and myself. Um, and we can speak to Matt for help, but, uh, we have come to a, uh, decision that we believe that the OSEP, which is we're going to ensure the project. Um, is going to be such that it's going to, and Tim can, when I get the numbers incorrectly or, or Mr. Kitchen, probably from the premium standpoint, early on, we've got about a million, one, ten, a million money savings. And that, uh, depending on what happens with the subcontractors, we could see, uh, up to two, two point four mil- one million. Um, so I, I think, and we can, you can hear from Matt if you'd like, um, but I think at this point in time, at least from Tim, Paul and myself, and Paul and Tim can obviously speak for themselves. I think that, you know, we're going to move forward, or we recommend we move forward to putting the OSEP together, the language in the contract, that's our final issue. So we will have a contract to sign again. Matt's online, it's very complex, and, uh, sometimes goes over my head, but, uh, it appears that we've, uh, settled up and it's going to be a substantial savings. And I think one of the main things that the school committee should know, Kitchington, jump in anytime, um, we're not going to have one insurance company overseeing the entire project. So there won't be separate insurance companies for subs and this, we will be taking on that responsibility through the OSEP. So it'll be much more controllable for us in the event we have any claims. And again, I'll, I'll also, if Tim and, uh, Paul want to speak and if they have anything to add, that's the general synopsis, so, um, I know you have a heavy agenda, so I just wanted to say that.
Uh, my question to you, Tim, is, uh, do you want, uh, Matt to speak?
Well, I guess only if Matt had, uh, if you guys had specific questions that, that really delve into the, the pros and cons of this insurance program versus the traditional that, um, we actually had Suffolk propose on originally. When the option of going with an OSEP was brought up and the fact that it could save some significant dollars for the, for the district. Um, pursuing that in the back and forth is kind of what, what's been taking a little while. Um, but between the premium savings, the, um, Suffolk not having to carry as much general liability, uh, at workman's compass as they otherwise would have. Uh, we're like, uh, Greg said, we're saving over a million dollars. Um, and then the potential to save, um, multiple millions going forward on each subcontractor, um, as they're submitting their bid. So what we would do is have them submit their bids, uh, with an alternate price to carry, uh, what the insurance cost would be. So we're not, we're not getting credits back, we're basically just paying lower bid prices, but we'll be able to track that because we'll have that included when they submit their bid. So we'll be able to tally how much, uh, the biz came in lower than they would have otherwise, had we gone a traditional route.
Is this a common practice where one entity will carry the insurance for all parts involved?
I think it's for these bigger projects, it is more common. Um, and this is obviously a significant project and, um, that's where, uh, Hub International, the district's, uh, insurance carrier. That suggestion, they do it on another, some of their other clients, and they suggested it and it kind of went through the numbers with us, but it took a little bit of back and forth, uh, with Suffolk understand. Um, who was going to carry what, what the value of that was, and so we've kind of gone through and, uh, and I think that, um, based on my understanding of it. Um, uh, and as Greg said, this is, you know, this is, you have a specialist, um, available if we have any questions, but, um, we would recommend moving forward.
You may want to ask, Mr. Chairman, whether or not you want to hear from Matt to give his recommendation how to put on record. I'm just saying, and, and again, there may be more questions you guys have, but it's gone. Kitchen's done a great job, um, because he understands it, I'll be very frank with you, some of the things that got very technical, I didn't understand, we just, I just learned today that Suffolk's part, Suffolk still has to have insurance. But they even gave us a small reduction in what they allocated, I don't know when that happened, but it, it went from.
This afternoon.
Yeah, yeah, still, yeah, still, still trying to push them, but anyhow, there may be some savings there as well. So all in all, you can ask Matt from, from HUB, um, to give him his, his recommendation on record, but, um, it looks like we'll be saving some money.
All right, Matt, are you on?
Is he down? Yeah, just. I am. Hello, everybody, how are you today? Sorry, can't join you in person.
Yep, I, how are you?
Matt, just say, uh, what you obviously just heard what Tim had just said, correct?
I did. Um, yeah, so the goal here is really to extract costs that would otherwise be in each of the trades line items on your budget for the project. Um, to answer a couple of questions that I did over here, and I'll just address them, yes. For projects north of a hundred and twenty million, we generally see this project, uh, buck used for general liability. When we exceed two hundred million, it makes sense to do both the general liability and the workers comp. Um, you know, aside from savings, it gives you a lot of coverage certainty, it gives you direct access to the policy, uh, and more control. So if you do have items immaterializing year four or five from a construction defect stance, you're not at odds with the general contractor who may not, you know, want you to bring a claim against their general liability policy and so forth. But from a savings point, yeah, we're, we're looking to recover at least one point four percent, uh, in our estimates from the subs, but as much as, uh, you know, some interest is higher, I wouldn't guarantee it, but, you know, some of the forecasting. But to believe that it could be as high as two to two and a half percent. Um, so based on roughly a hundred and eighty-seven million dollars worth of cost in the trades alone, that's fairly significant dollars. Um, so if anybody had any particular questions, I can obviously knock those out there.
Um, yeah, I mean, we, we, uh, being the chairman for that committee and, uh, and speaking with all the other committee members, I mean, we. We want to thank you and we want to thank Mr. Kitchen, because I know he and Tim were originally were once discussing this, and I know Greg has been getting bombarded with, uh, contracts, uh, language and everything else, but. Uh, we thank you for getting this together, it's not an easy thing, people think putting this contract together is as simple as, uh, as, as hiring employee, it's not, it's a big, big to do with, um, I want to thank you and, uh, the rest of, uh, yeah, uh, Mr. Kitchen, uh, Greg, Tim, and the rest of your staff for putting this together. I want to thank Suffolk for working with us on this, because I know they sometimes like to have their own insurance, but this is, it's got to work, it's got to work. So, and I tell you, uh, Mr. Kitchen, you have anything to say?
No, main standing is that the. With Suffolk gone, we're submitted today, so.
So you think by the next school committee meeting?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it could be early.
Could be early.
Okay. If they need.
It's up to you.
No, we'll wait till the contract is.
The, uh, if, if, Mr. Chairman, if, um, if we need a, a vote earlier than the actual committee meeting, can we contact you to maybe put together, uh, meeting just for that?
So we can move this project.
Move it, you'll be, if Suffolk needs it, you know, you know, sort of the way.
Okay. Any, any other questions, Paul? All right, thank you.
Matt, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate it.
Thank you, Matthew.
Do you have anything else on that?
Yeah, Tim, do you have any other updates for us at all?
Um, just, uh, general update, um, will be really brief, but what we've been working on recently is, is just trying to get the scope of delivery packages pulled together, so that's a site enabling, uh, electrical make safe. Um, those types of things.
I, I've ahead of myself.
That's.
I just turned the page.
Yeah.
You are.
Special recognition is next.
Yeah, I'll get right back to you on that, and I know we got Craig online too, got some blue, so, okay, um, sorry, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
Okay, moving on to, uh, three point one, all the matters, a special recognition, Mr. Bentley.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, tonight is kind of your night, and we have some invited guests here, so I'm immediately going to turn this over to Mr. Edward Hill, uh, who has a few words to say, and several presentations for yourself, Mr. Chairman.
I know, I know Paul doesn't like these type of things, but, you know, something he deserves it for his time here. I think anybody that sat on a board, particularly for twenty-one years, understands the commitment you have to make to the school, the community, the staff. And nobody forgets Diamond School Committee is not paid, you've probably attended, I wrote down over two hundred and fifty meetings, you've served with six superintendents, two business managers, of course, you changed the name, only one lawyer though. So this, this is a perfect time to do this, uh, because the Diamond School Committee is going to be sixty years old in two months. Everybody, they guess, everybody thinks the school committee started in sixty-eight, it actually started in sixty-three in July, when the regional agreement was signed. In sixty-four, Russ Harmon joined this committee, and he stayed on for twenty years, and for all this time, he's been the longest serving member. Until the election yesterday in Westport, which made Mr. Jennings the longest serving member in the history of the school, so I think he needs a round of applause. Other, a couple of people have served, it shows you that a lot of people all these years have served long, Ernest Wheeler served eighteen years, Antonio Grace from Westport, seventeen. Uh, Francis Harrington from Paul River, fifteen, of course, he's served on the four of us who committee too. Leo Brunier in Swansea, ten, Ed Hill, whoever that is, thirteen years in Swansea, Ray Mitchell, Gabe Andre, ten. So, I mean, it shows you, there isn't a, a lot of people that served many years here. So this is incredible what you did, and you know, I knew about the way with Paul, but he sat next to me for ten years. And I know when I first got on, I was reluctant to ask questions, I would wait until the meeting was over, talk to Ray Mitchell later, or Gabe Andre, usually at the China World Lounge. What was that about? I wasn't sure about that. Not with Paul, first meeting, within five minutes, he's asking questions, he's writing me notes saying, what's this, what's that, you knew this was, this was the right place for him. Now, obviously being a former graduate, he was, I think, the third or fourth former graduate began this school committee. By the way, we had two quorum today, because we have a couple of other school committee members, I was, I said, Gabe, uh, Mr. Hassel, who was also chairman for a while, would like to say a few words.
First up, you did a good job keeping my seat warm. I, you know, I, it's unbelievable when I hit twenty-one years, because I think I served seven or eight, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what it was, and I had, I didn't have gray hair when I started on this school committee, and you can see what it is today. But especially when you have to get elected, and, you know, that's even more difficult, because you can go back to the voters every couple of years, whatever it is in Westport, and run campaign and, and do the things you have to do, that in itself is a drag. So I've been involved in some campaigns, not with myself, and I wouldn't want to be, but I can applaud everything that you've tried to do for Diamond, and I'll tell you, you know, I, I feel that, that I have my heart into the school, but nothing compared to what you have. So I want to just say thank you for everything you're doing for Diamond and, uh, all the best as you go forward.
Thank you.
Looking forward to that.
Certainly has something from the school they, they built for you.
Put a bright word along since the Jennings, we'll put a rat at the table, they are not rocking chairs. They're not retirement chairs. These are enjoyment chairs.
Obviously, it was built by the Coventry Shop and Cabinet Making, on your behalf, Paul.
Very nice, thank you.
Your vice chair has something to present too.
It's a piece of some of these are in trouble, I don't have my daughters here to help them. He told you.
Oh, we got another Diamond rat on this board. Chop was that?
On behalf of the school committee, members of the, uh, past school committees, superintendents, et cetera, uh, Mr. Jennings, you've taken every one of us under your wing. And, uh, we've come here, we felt from the first meeting on, um, like, like we belong here. And, uh, we want to thank you for that, and part of our thanking is, uh, representing you with the Diamond Regional Distinguished Graduate Award two thousand twenty-three.
Also, we have, um, Mr. Brewer from the, um, Westport Selectmen Office.
Thank you, Ed.
Nice looking chairs, we wouldn't mind sitting in one, but I probably couldn't get out of here. My name is Dick Brewer, and I remember the Board of Selectmen, soon to be renamed Select Board in the town of Westport, where all resides. And I'm here on behalf of the Board of Selectmen to congratulate you and thank you and appreciate your, your efforts over the last twenty-one years. Now, I didn't plan it this way, but this is really a special day for Westport and Diamond, really yesterday, of course, we had a ballot measure. Of course, we're going to pay our fair share anyway, but we really wanted us to come out as excluded debt, uh, on the tax levy as opposed to the, the budget, like all towns, we, we've got a tight budget. And we were committed one way or the other, it was going to happen. But thankfully, the voters did the right thing, and by a fairly wide margin, uh, voted for the measure to include this, uh, financial obligation for the next thirty years as part of excluded debt. And that's very important to us. I also had the privilege of working on getting a word out about Diamond, because you might remember that the Diamond question that we dealt with yesterday was on the ballot last November during the midterm elections, and it failed. It failed by just a small margin. And the select board looked at each other, and we, and we said, well, what did we do wrong here? And we just didn't get the word out, we didn't make much of an effort, and we said, we have only ourselves to blame. So let's do a better job another time, and let's put it on the election that was held yesterday. I got called one of your graduates, Mr. Rainey LaChapelle, and I said, can you get me some signs? And he said, I got some, they said, probably not appropriate, because it said something else on it, support a new diamond, we're talking about supporting ballot measure. So he said, well, you know how to paint, don't you? And go and get some, uh, you know, rustoleum and put on what you want, which was vote yes for Diamond, yes, I mean, if yes was big, the diamond was already there. So the message was yes to Diamond, just people were saying, what is excluded debt? I don't know what it is, I said, don't, don't worry. And I don't have a gift.
Oh, that's a perfect.
I had a gift, it would be one of those signs. I said, vote yes to Diamond, we appreciate what you've done for Diamond and the city of West, town of Westport, and thank you, wish you the best of luck and all the happiness.
All those former superintendents that you served would like to say a few words, Marty?
And there'll be very few, uh, but I think I speak for, for all of the superintendents that worked with you over the years, you were first a student here, then an alumni. And you brought both of those perspectives to your role on the school committee. You, you are always there for the students, and I think that is the greatest testament anyone can say for anybody on this committee.
Thank you.
Uh, we have Senator Roderick, would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Ed, good evening, everyone. Um, first of all, Paul, congratulations, twenty-one years, that's an amazing accomplishment, and, uh, as a fellow Westporter, I've been honored to vote for you all those twenty, you know, for the past twenty-one years, you've done a tremendous job. Representing, uh, our town of Westport on the Diamond School Committee. Uh, and, uh, in addition to that, your accomplishments resonate throughout the state, so I'm honored to present to you this Massachusetts State Senate Citation. Um, uh, be hereby known to all of the Massachusetts Senate, hereby extends its congratulations to Paul Jennings, Diamond Regional School Committee, Westport member. In recognition of being the longest serving committee member after twenty-one years of dedicated service and commitment to the Diamond Regional School and the Westport community. It be further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its very best wishes for all of your continued success. Paul, congratulations.
Thank you.
It was great to vote for you again.
Best of the way, quick vote, it's Diamond, nevermind.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
That's what Paul, I'm, I'm finished, you keep standing, now it's your time to say a few words before we wrap it up.
Well, I, I just, I, I'm just overwhelmed, actually, really, and, uh, not one for praises, but I, I just want to say thank you to everyone, thank you to the voters of, uh, Westport for keeping me here and, you know, the board, everybody, thank you, thank you. Everybody here, Mr. Kitchen. I, uh, I don't, I, I, I don't know where to begin, it's just, uh, you know, I, I, I'm actually shocked and, uh. Well, I'm here for another three more years and. Thank you, thank you, Paul.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Let's get that new school built.
Yes. Thank you, Ed, thank you so much.
Thank you, good evening.
Thank you.
Let me vote it for you also.
Thank you.
Vote off.
I thought it was me.
Let me go check.
I'm going to need some students to help you carry those chairs.
Yeah, I. Wish I would have brought my pickup. Three point one, all the matters, B, MSBA School Building Committee update. Okay.
Um, anybody who wants to speak has school chair.
Tim, fuck. Uh, Tim, uh, want to finish, I'm sorry, I've been cutting you off for that.
No, no, that's okay, I didn't realize, uh, Greg, where Greg was on.
Is Craig on there as well, right? I, I, I thought one of them was going to be on tonight.
Yeah, I think he was, uh, going to be doing an update, but as far as, um, some of the things that we've been working on is, um. We're getting an RFQ or RFP out for materials testing services, that's the people who come out and check compaction of soil and, and, uh, make sure the concrete is in place properly, those types of things. Um, so that will be going in the, um, goods and services bulletin. Um, we're put out, uh, a request for pre-qualifications for, uh, electrical file subtrades, so those will be coming in shortly and, and we'll start going through their qualifications packages. So, um, there are a lot of other stuff going on, um, outside the, the contract and the insurance stuff, but, um, uh, Craig can fill you in a little bit more from the design side.
Greg?
I don't think, I don't think he's on.
None of them, neither one?
I talked to him today, I don't think he, he didn't tell me.
He had, he had another meeting to go to, I don't know if he finished in time.
Yeah, Greg had another meeting, Greg, uh, I thought was going to be, but.
I want to take up that issue regarding the, the reconfiguration of the.
Oh, yeah, so, so, right, so I had talked to, um, uh, both, uh, we, when we initially put together the oversight, we had included, uh, Colliers and Castle Blue's incident to, uh, according to MSBA, they had to be part of the voting process. Yep. So, um, or select something, so, uh, anyways, now that we're into the next stage, uh, where it's an oversight, um, both Castles and Colliers have asked to be taken out of that, because they're not a, um, they're not going to be voting on something, and we're questioning them on. So, um, so with that, uh, it's just, uh, they wanted to resign from that, I believe.
Yes, yeah, so just to make things, uh, cleaner, we're advising the committee, so it would be, um, it would be unusual for us then to vote on something as well, so. Um, and that's, you know, we'll be bringing things throughout the, the process of construction to you, uh, for review and approval.
I can correct, transparency for, for no conflicts, they should be now, uh, their, their resignation, so to speak, from the, uh, oversight, they should be accepted, voted on by the full committee, and they, at this point in time, move down to seven members.
You can vote on that group.
Yeah, I would take a vote, just so you're clear.
You're second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Don, you want to report on the meeting on Friday, or you want me to give this synopsis up to you?
I, I, you know, I, I honestly, uh, wasn't going to bring it up, because lots of meeting, I think that's not a problem. We are glad that Greg brought it up.
Well, I, I apologize, it's not because, I, I apologize, Mr. Tim.
We have a meeting with the mayor.
We have the meeting with the administration, the mayor and, and, and several members of their committee team, um, on, on Friday. Um, they've given us some things that they'd like to discuss, uh, there are numerous things that we hope to discuss with them in terms of moving the project forward, as I told, uh, the chairman, chairman of the board, and I'll say tonight, Mr. DiBiase, and I think I told Don today, we were talking briefly about it. I think after Friday's meeting, I'm going to suggest that the Oversight Committee, um, get together, you know, pretty quickly thereafter next week, based on what we learn tomorrow, and, uh, put a plan together in terms of moving forward based on the city and what they tell us regarding the permitting process, I think it just, it'd be good to do that.
Who is the point person between the project and the city? Because I was watching, uh, Greg as well, last night, the joint meeting of the school committee and the city council on the budget, and there's about twenty minutes dedicated to Diamond that was, and from my understanding, there's some misunderstandings that they have. I'm trying to where the project is, and I talked to a committee member who said he's been asking questions from the city and not getting clear answers, who speaks to the mayor's office or the city from Diamond?
All right, so initially, when we put this committee together, um, we had, um, Mr. The Superintendent of Schools and the Chairman for the School Committee are the ones that are, uh, will be the ones that answer questions outside of the MSBA. If there's something that's concerning the project that they need to know, they come to me, but these two gentlemen, uh, the ones that were, um, basically if the, if somebody has a question, they could contact these two gentlemen, um, if they need to be, I mean.
I, I think, Mr. Chairman, um, I, I think, and, and to answer Paul Jay's question, I think at some point in time, and, and I'm sure it's already been done in some respects, but maybe not as clear cut as, I guess, the city would like. I think we're going to have to designate whether it be Tim, whether it be Greg, or somebody from their respective companies relative to the permitting process, as to who's going to have that dialogue directly with the city. Because I think that's, that's what has been told to me, that there's, they, they believe that there's some.
But are we still doing value engineering for example?
Can I, can I?
We, we passed that.
Can I interview for one second, because I had this conversation, uh, with both Tim and Greg, uh, this, this week, and Greg, um, told me that he was in constant communication, because, because, constant communication at Alamo, with the mayor, who's now our sheriff. And, um, he would, be, be the mayor of Alamo, the biggest entity, just like our mayor is the biggest entity of the project, um, Greg would constantly be the person he would talk to, because the, the designer, uh, the architect is really the one that knows where we are in the project and how things are going, because he's.
And to supplement your answer, Don, I believe, and if I'm mistaken, someone can correct me, I believe our architect is charge of committee, as part of his, I believe, as part of his contract with us, he's a charge of committee, so I think he would be. I was going to suggest that after Friday, but, but you're right, Paul, last night they said we were still in value engineering, and I notified the city, we are not in value engineering. And I notified the city, we are not in value engineering. That was done in February.
But if they have questions, if the mayor or City Council, should they go to Brian, to Paul, Castle Blue's, to Greg, who who should they?
Well, I think they should, I think they should go to the mayor because the mayor is the one that
If the mayor has a question.
If the mayor has a question, then if it's concerning the project, we're gonna have to speak, we will on Friday, speak with Greg and those two are gonna get each other's phone number.
Yeah, I I would recommend that.
One person who's communicating with the city.
Because, right, because any question that anybody might have, whether it's a selectman from a town or the mayor or the city council, what this gentleman, this gentleman, or I'm gonna say is, I'll get back to you. We're gonna talk with our, our, our representatives from Colliers and Castle Blue's. So I think that's why Greg told me point blank, he just dealt directly with the mayor. And then if it was something that the mayor was wishing for, he would contact me. The 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 chairman for the committee and that chairman would then relate to the superintendent and the chairman for the school committee if there was an issue. So I think that's what I'd like to see the communication go, and I think that's what we're gonna work on on Friday. And we'll make sure everybody has everybody's phone number. Craig and Greg and Tim will have, they'll have their phone number. I know he has all the suffix contacts because he dealt with them for five years. So, but I think it's time.
Should the mayor or City Council be contacting Suffolk directly or?
They should be contacting Greg Castle Blue's directly.
Is the disconnect in the lack of information or is the disconnect in the lack of communication? Is it lack of information or lack of communication?
I think it's the lack of communication, I don't, or or information too. I don't think, I think because we've been so getting this, you know, we we hired suffixes. Apparently, we're in the middle of this contract. I think we kinda left them out because we were trying to get that done.
So we can resolve it by Friday.
But I think this is why
An eight-point person communicates with
So it's always gonna be the architect because he is the one that has a grip on everything.
Okay, he's the pulse of the project.
Correct, I mean, Tim is, Tim is great deal with him because he consults with Tim on everything. So so I think if they all give their phone numbers to the mayor and city council members if they choose, so if they have questions about the project, they're gonna enter it firsthand. If it's a question that relates to something involved in the project that needs to go back to the MSBA committee, then I will, they'll contact me and I'll contact the superintendent.
Should someone communicate that to the mayor?
Yes, we will do that on Friday. We have a meeting with the mayor at eleven o'clock.
One o'clock, one thirty.
One thirty.
Here, one thirty, right?
One thirty, right here, beautiful. We think that time.
Who should they?
How, well, the the mayor has asked for Castle Blue's and all his engineers, Tim from Colliers, the people from the suffixes.
Suffix is going, suffix has been notified and I don't think they're gonna be here personally. They're gonna be here, at least to my understanding, at least.
And to not, and to not make a quorum, myself and Mr. Jennings is gonna be here.
Correct.
As the chairman for the committee and the chairman for the project. And it's basically for them to just talk about permitting. That's all this meeting is basically on. We ask for an agenda, Mr.
I ask for the agenda. It came today. What is a forum?
Three.
Three, so we, that's why we cannot
We we can have three.
We can have three.
We can't, you can't.
The Subcommittee for the Oversight is Mr. Bentley. That's why we have three.
But if John comes, he's not a forum.
I'm not coming. I wasn't invited.
Yeah, to go that, that has become a school committee meeting. But
Those are those who are Fall River appointees, perhaps, Director.
I can, I can be there if you, if This is mainly to just deal with the project and and it's not actually, it's more gonna be towards aimed at Castle Blue's and his engineers. That's what this mainly gonna be aimed at. I'm just gonna be there to see what's going on with the project.
To be very honest with you, it really is about permitting. Apparently, the disconnect here is the city has some issues with the fact that they think that we need to do more relative to permitting with the various agencies. That was what the substance of the, of the, of the meeting that was requested. We want to discuss a couple of other things relative to permitting as well. But that's what basically the purpose that they want to call it. They're bringing in the city engineer. They're bringing in the head of the water department, sewer department. They're bringing in the building inspector. From their standpoint, is they want to get a handle on permitting. It's really technical. And Tim and Greg will have to answer those questions. I, I mean, I know I can't. I have no idea. But but that is
So bring clarity on Friday.
Yes, and that's why I think that
And then we're gonna be, like we said, we're gonna have an oversight committee next week and then the week after, we have an MSBA meeting. So the committee there can hear what's going on. So over the next two weeks, everybody will be informed of what's happening with the, with the permitting.
Do you have an agenda that you can send to us of what's on that meeting? Send an email. Daddy, there's no bullets, but I'll send it. Whoever wants one, I'll send a copy of it. I give it to you, Brian, right?
And I got it this morning. There, I can send it out.
If you want to send it out.
I'll send it out to the committee.
Sure.
It's like bullet points.
Yes. I just kept requesting because I didn't know what the meeting was going to be, so I requested a reseparation. So we are all on the same page, not walking into the room on Friday, having to address things that we know nothing about. So I got it this morning.
And once this meeting transpires on Friday, maybe we can send a document to all the school committee, the City Council and people of the administration that we do in fact have a pinpoint person to communicate with. Any questions, any concerns, and whatever element that may be, this is our, this is our pulse.
And I think it's not only the mayor. I think it's the select I think everybody needs to be updated on what's going on on the project.
Yeah, I only brought that up because of the meeting last night, seeing that
Yes, it was a lot to go on and
They felt that things were ambiguous.
Yeah.
Yes. I think I think things were ambiguous, listening to the answers that were being given, the questions.
So hopefully that can, this can, you know, can complete that. I know a couple of the couple of city councils have reached out to people that I got contacted today. I told them we'll have more answers for them on Monday and then the mayor can share with the city council on what we don't. So in that, Tim, do you have anything else on that? I mean?
No, just, I think, having a process in place for distributing information is is good. The the permitting things are a little bit, they're a little different, just that it happens upfront and then we're done. It's throughout the process of the construction where we're having, you know, four communities and making sure that the four communities all hear this information that it can get overwhelming if you're getting calls from everybody with questions. It's it's good to kind of funnel those so that you understand are those programmatic questions, are they community relations questions? Are they truly construction questions? So we can talk about that, what's the best way to move forward. But I think some sort of a funneling and and then that person kind of distributing of who's the appropriate person to respond to that. And then how do we get that information out to everybody that needs to know about?
I think we'll clear that up and then, if you have any questions on that, we'll bring it up at the oversight next week. And then the week after, we have a SBA committee.
All right.
Everybody be aware of what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Next is the MSBA Project Expenditures.
It's the kitchen.
These are the monthly expenditures, the Colliers, it was helping, Colliers sold it for last, last figure. So that's ninety-one thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Suffix is twenty-five thousand for pre-con work. And then Castle Blue's is two hundred and sixty-nine thousand one hundred. Invoice.
The recommendation is to approve the MSBA Project Expenditures as a
Motion?
Do you second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, moving on to three point one other matters C, personnel, Mr. Bentley.
Mr. Chairman, you see before you and members of the committee, you see before you the names that have been selected and appointed to the various positions. We have a combination of some athletics in there. We have also freshman placement testing, which is coming up next week. We have tutors, advisors, and we have a brand new instructor in our advanced manufacturing program, Brandon Pagew. He started on Monday. It was in Monday, he just started. We have that. So that's for the committee's information. We also have the resignation of a freshman softball coach. Again, that's for the committee's information.
Thank you. See advisory appointments, Mr. Bentley?
Yes, we have quite an extensive list of advisory appointments. As you know, our advisory board was just held this past week. We had a number of new people who have stepped up and applied to be on the advisory board. This will need the school committee's vote in order to officially approve them. As you see, the list is there. I will not go through each one unless the committee wants me to. This is for your information, so you can read their background. The recommendation is to appoint the applicants listed as advisory board members of the identified programs for a term next three years.
Get a motion on that?
You should make.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
All right.
Oppose?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
While we're on advisory, I was, Mr. Revell walking around, talking to not only the shops, but the history and science and that. Great attendance and like Mr. Revell says, Maria will tell you, the spring, the spring is not always like the fall. Never is busy, but it was very busy. The, yeah, he said, these advisory appointments are very important because these, they, I don't know how they're gonna fit some of these in there. They're gonna have to go and get a regular classroom pretty soon because there's a lot of people showing up, which is great. Their, their questions that they asked in Mr. Revell, and I know the stories went around as well. Amazing, I mean, they're really interested in the school and the new school. And I asked some of the teachers, you know, is it help? And they said, absolutely. So just to let you know, it was well attended. Mr. Bentley spoke in an auditorium and and Mr. Revell, it was great. Everybody appreciate it.
As as the committee notes, the advisory board members are the backbone of our shops. They keep our eyes and ears on business and industry, not only in the shops, but also in the academic programs. They are a vital function to this building. I were very proud and happy to have them with us.
Thank you.
Moving on to other matters B, the student travel requests. We do, and this is not so much a travel request. This has already been approved by the board. But this has been now a change of a date that was done and that was due to travel, the way that it was done. So originally, it was April twenty-five to April thirtieth. It's now been moved by one day to May first, and that is strictly for travel purposes with flights and such and such. And the recommendation is to approve the revised travel request as presented.
You motion?
I should make.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? I oppose. Three point one other matters E, we have the eleventh grade admissions.
Yes, and I'll start this off. This is really in Mr. Revell's wheelhouse. And that is the looking at with the admission of grade eleven students. And I'll let Mr. Revell explain exactly what's going on there.
Sure, so the idea here is how can we educate more students? And is is that even possible? Looking at models throughout the state. Bedford Vogue, for example, has had two-year junior transfer programs for a very long time. So how can we do that here? You see the enrollment decline on your first page over the years for and for multiple reasons. And, you know, COVID has affected that. But there really is an opportunity that junior year. We currently accept sophomore transfer from outside. So if a student, you know, applies for their freshman year, doesn't get in, applies again for their sophomore year, they do have an opportunity to come in. That would just expand it to junior year. We met with all the vocational department heads to talk about models. How would this work? And they did receive it very well. Basically, if I'm a junior, I would be in junior academics, but I'd follow the same path vocationally that a sophomore transfer would. So it would only be in shops that have openings, one. Some programs would not be able to accommodate this. I'm thinking health assisting where they have clinical hours that they do. There's so much that freshman year that they have to contain. They can't get there. But some of our other programs like building and property or business technology have seats in their junior year or even their sophomore year, hoping that they could accommodate a two-year program within what they're currently doing. And within your package, you do see FAQs there because there are questions. There are questions of, well, how does this affect credits? We do have a plan for that to add it into the student handbook. What does it mean for prerequisites? Any candidate or any student that we do accept would have to understand that they're not gonna be eligible for co-op. You have to understand that they are gonna have to complete OSHA before they can start. So there are some things there that that help answer that. And even behind that, we did start breaking down, all right, so students are leaving, our enrollment has come down a little bit. Why? And on that third page, you see some of the things from the start of the year till about February, why students? And I would draw your attention to year of grad, that YOG, the twenty-twenty-sixes, those freshmen, that bottom half. It's really because I didn't get the shop I wanted. This really isn't for me. Some of the other ones for the sophomores and juniors where there are openings, we can't replace those with acceptances. If you're a sophomore or junior and you leave us, there's no mechanism to bring in kids to replace it. We can with freshmen, we can with sophomores and juniors during the student leaves for attendance. So this is in front of you today for discussion and approval. But I would say if there are more questions and we want to flesh this out further, I would suggest we could bring it to the Admissions Policy Subcommittee Committee if the committee deems that necessary. And we can flesh it out further there. Mr. Bentley and I did look at our admissions policy and the language is general right now. It says we accept transfers, grade nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. That language is already in there. We could take it even further by putting specific language for junior transfers. We don't do that right now for sophomores, but we could take it a step further should the committee deem that necessary.
I, I, I have two questions. Well, I I I read it, read it over and, I mean, the policy is already there, like you said. The the only change or addition, I would say, would be on page two at the bottom line where it says greater for vocational may apply. I I think it should say greater for vocational district may apply. That that kind of narrows it down to the four communities.
Absolutely.
I I, greater for it could, you know.
That's language directly from our policy, so that would be changed.
I think it was even written in language. It should say the school district.
Okay, yes, school district.
Right.
I mean, other than that, I mean, I I didn't have any problems with that.
And we want to be
I I have one thing to say. Other school districts in this area have gone back to just freshman only and choice school. Because they found going to the higher ones, juniors, for example, or even seniors. But they found that they were getting kids kicked out of their other school. They were finding kids that have problems at the other school. So I just want you to be aware that this is something that if we're gonna vote on this, I would say, Mr. Chairman, we vote on it for one year. It's a one-year trial period to see how the students are that we take in. Because if we vote on this and we're committed to this, now it's becomes a, an issue that we might have to come back.
Take the same application as a freshman to get
Well, the freshman, yeah, the different
Junior.
Right, but
They have to have a certain standard of scholastics, attendance, and we would follow the same admissions policy, but
What I'm saying is, is I I would prefer to see it as a one-year trial program and then put it in a full effect. So that way, if you have to critique it or you have, or we don't like what we were getting, then we can back right out of it.
Sure, but you know, then we get the sophomores right now. We use the same admissions policy, so they should be
Is a one-year enough time to determine its efficacy, whether we're getting
Well, the state, the state every year makes it from the U R admissions policy. And we have to submit our admissions policy every year. So we will be looking at this yearly, no matter whether we call this a one-year program or not, we're already
You gone point, can we just ask the simple question of what is the reason for the transfer? If it's dismissal from another school, we don't have to accept them, right?
It comes on the application process anyhow, right?
Right, on the application, this this committee voted, what you thought, the application and admissions Subcommittee voted to add language that would let us look at certain reasons what are happening. Maybe the student isn't a best fit for Diamond Regional. And that was there. This would just continue that.
We still require a guidance person from the sending school to give us.
Yeah. Descendants to discipline, so we would see a dismissal or this.
We also, we also know that sometimes they don't tell us everything we need to know. So we know that.
We, but we also have the right looking at what comes over to us to make that call because that was added in for this year's freshman class. Is that what happens if the guidance department says, what does this mean? That they can go in and they can ask that school, what exactly does this mean?
I, I back, I back this hundred percent, believe me, because this is something but back, which
Okay, one thing that we should all realize from Mr. Kitchen, and I want to speak up for him. When we don't have those kids that leave in junior senior year, it hasn't relatively
Yeah, we, I understand that. I want to get into that, yeah. I really, I don't want to do this for a bunch of dirty reasons. I want to do it because we care about the kids. And somebody has a junior somewhere that fits and wants to get some education here for the future is awesome. But that's as long as that's what we're looking at. We're not filling the seat because we want money. We're filling the seat because we also want to make sure we help, you know, which You know, which is something that.
I, I think your illustration wants to get the right.
That's, I'm just, I'm just saying that other districts have found it to be a big problem.
There is room in some shops, not all, in some shops that can be filled. We have to be very careful in looking at those shops and voting for the right student. And by the right student, I mean a help assisting student has to help through a series of things in freshman year and sophomore year with advanced ju. Okay, but will, and those students don't usually leave us. For the shops, some do. We can, we can get that education to those students. There is a huge push for students to receive skills training.
Absolutely.
And the workforce is demanding it. We have spots available, right? We need to take advantage of that.
Okay. I need a motion. Need a second? All in favor? I oppose. I'll say, thank you. Uh, three point one other matters F, use of facilities.
We have several requests that have come in. We'll take them one by one. The Doc, Diamond Soccer Team is requesting use of gymnasium Saturday, May thirteenth. Point out that it is a Saturday from ten to five for the annual cornhole tournament fundraiser. And is to recommend that waive all use of facilities as it is going to benefit one of our own teams here.
You have a motion on that? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? I oppose.
The second one is a request from a gentleman by the name of Greg Malino, who represents State Busy Incorporated. They had come to us looking for something called Busy Fest with two things. One, they want to have something here on June ninth. It doesn't matter because it's a Friday. They want to have breakfast in our restaurant. That's about fifty people or so. I did consult with culinary artists. They said they'd love to have the people here. And of course, it would be paid event. So the restaurant's the day after graduation. Probably not going to be a very busy day in the restaurant, but they're willing to do that. However, they came back and they do want to utilize a three-on, they want to have a three-on-three basketball tournament. And they asked, would the gym be available? Went to the athletic director, who investigated it with any coach uses, anything going on. The gym would be available on Saturday, June tenth. There is no admission charge. He's doing this kind of as a goodwill thing in this community. We do have availability. I did tell him that there would have to be a charge though for the custodial fee and would have to be a charge for security. Because I don't know how many people it's going to draw. They would be charged a grand total of three hundred and six dollars. I would recommend because they are not charging admission and they're not trying to make any money. And they're trying very hard to say that if we have a group that wants to sell water or snacks, a student group here to raise money for their club. That'd be willing to do it. So my recommendation is that the committee does approve this and that we would waive the fees of the facility fee of four hundred dollars. But the custodial fee and security fee, because that's personnel, we do need people present and being paid for them.
And, and they don't have any insurance?
They have, they have produced already a, they've built out the proper forms, and they have produced a certificate of liability. They have done that.
Recommendation, your motion? Need a second? All in favor? I oppose.
We have on the next page, though, we have also, I'll just continue on if it's okay with you. The acceptance of gifts. We have the Bristol County DA's office is donating a thousand dollars to support supplies needed for Diamond Family Wellness Fest on May seventh. You want to do these one at a time?
We'll take them all. You can.
Okay. We also have Perfect Smiles Dentistry donating two thousand dollars to support supplies needed for the Wellness Fest. St. Anne's Hospital donating a thousand dollars for the Diamond Wellness Fest. Spalding Brick Company of Wilmington, Mass. has donated colored bricks of eight hundred and sixty dollar value to be used as practice materials for the upcoming Skills USA competition. Mr. Machado, Rapid Communication Department Head, has donated five hundred dollars in trade materials to be used by students in the electricity program. Mr. Machado is an employee here in the building. He is reaching out to make a personal donation. And Ralph Coelectra, Rainy Glass Chappelle, has donated five hundred dollars in trade materials to be used by students in the electricity program. With that, my recommendation is that all donations be accepted as submitted.
Did a motion on that? Need a second? All in favor? I oppose. Moving on to H, the dental equipment, Mr. Kitchen.
Last month, we put out a bid through the Skills Capital Grant for the dentists, dental assisting department. There was one respondent, Patterson Dental, St. Paul, Minneapolis. The amount we bid was six hundred and four thousand, four hundred and seventy one dollars. There's a list of the items that were asked for, requested by the dental, by Mrs. Bettin, by Mrs. Torres. For the milling, milling machine, X-ray machine, X-ray machine, software, a CT. Panworks machine, so CT X-ray machines, stand-up machine, home beam technology. And there were a few other items in here for a digital printer for digital impressions as well. So this, this fund is from the Skills Capital Grant of the two point five million, of which we've spent just shy of two million. Oh, one point four, one point five in advanced manufacturing, and then this six hundred. This will complete the, well, we'll have about five hundred thousand left, so. Huh?
We'll figure it out.
What was the total? Two point five, so we just spent almost two million.
But you get something already out there.
Does that include the six hundred thousand? No, this will break the goal back, well, the two million.
That'll bring us to.
Yeah, okay.
And this, and some of this stuff can be used towards a new school.
Absolutely.
All right, the recommendation is to approve and award. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? I oppose.
Hi, monthly financial report. Monthly financial report, there's two, actually, there's three deficits that you should be able to indicate. One is on substitutes during the whole, about twenty seven hundred dollars. Page two, we're in negative about sixty-six thousand on the IT, and that was for the current, the encumbrance that we took on for the next year's freshman. And then there is one for a, for the early retirement, that's, that's just, that is to an encumbrance that we have, that I'm not sure we've spent. The two million of other thousands, we just, where to find where the transfers later this evening.
Yes, Chairman. So we increased the substitute budget. Why are we over already? Why are we over?
Do you like, it's actually, the budget was increased to.
So here it is, only you told me we were over.
No, because we actually transferred money out of it. The budget originally we said is two hundred and fifty thousand. Right now it's at one thirteen. We transferred money out when we were moving subs onto the S R two grant.
Correct.
So we stopped doing the S R two. January. So with the rate that you're paying now and the amount of subs that we're using, coverage, you can expend at a much higher rate.
Sure, Rabello, you still, you still need that many subs all the time?
Yes, you've seen, it's a past. We do have a very substantial pool. I think at times over the past two years, we were, it was pretty dire. But this committee's motions to bring the money up, we have a very substantial pool, and we're in good shape. Both that are needing those subs.
And Mr. Tiviaso and committee members. Teachers during the day who do have preparation periods are regularly assigned a substitute period. So that is in addition to the daily substitutes that are in, but they are being given also what they call coverages. Okay, that are in there too.
I see other school districts still advertising for substitutes.
Lucky, we have a good number of them. And a lot of them are faithful that want to work here.
All right, any, any other questions? Okay, none. Moving to J, expansions. We have a number of expansions, Mr. Kitchen.
Expenditures that we're requesting will actually line up also with the transfers. So like you kind of touched on transfer, we were asking for a transfer of just above a million dollars from our extraordinary expense into these lines. Fundamentally, the largest one is going to be electronics. We were looking at applying for Skills Capital Grant again, but we did. I recommended that we not pursue it because we're sitting, sitting at two point five plus five million on the other one. The likelihood of investing that kind of effort to apply to the grant again, it would probably not affect us. Plus, we have to spend the carryover money, but that's the recommended last of transferred in March here. So we have to, we have to spend our carryovers to meet our next school spending. Therefore, we're spending it on. Equipment in the building. To pre-purchase. Prepare the shops for what they'll need. So the top three, we've already taken into consideration. The workbench is in advanced manufacturing, will be five units with the, near the house machines, auto tech. Those are three pots. What they're looking to do is move out of the crib and go into having the. The matics, it's not the matics, it's like the battery operator now. Tool pots at each of the stations. Buildings and grounds and security. Patterson is the dental that we've had. Practice comes dental again, someone on the grant. And then electronics is some of the lab chairs, and then all of the balance of them are all either routers. Three D printers, drones, digital meters, laser pro engraver. And then the following one is EIA, like education, which is calculators.
Calculator is on there twice. Is that, is that a misprint?
No. The one above it is being paid out of title one and title four. And then I am fulfilling Mr. Malice's request for additional calculators on regular appropriation. So there's just two funds, just two funding sources.
The price of calculator.
The CIA floors are about a hundred and twenty-five apiece. So there's two, two hundred units. There's twenty blocks, twenty, ten, ten back.
And we provide that to our students. We provide those calculators to our students.
As a loaner, they give them back.
There's just like a front book, okay? Yeah. Sorry. That's okay. While in communications for graphics, Mr. Shadow's looking to, we're reconfiguring and setting up a bid. So is Max, I think, both last year, going to go into the freshman class and using the one gift, stainless PCs. Title technologies, maintenance agreement for the accounting system. Total welding, the one thirty-seventh is for. Eight welding units. That can actually be charged up to the five million dollar grant if necessary, if we have to get towards the end of the year, and it's not what I feel comfortable with.
That was a part of the original, probably correct, I'm paying for welding. We do something, we bought some stuff for that shop, right?
We bought, we bought four other ones early.
Correct.
So those are regular appropriation. And then if I had to, this, this one thirty-seven, if necessary, into the grant, get reimbursed on it. At this time, I don't think there's a need for it. We'll see where it goes. But it's a general entry, if we have to, but that was the bill, freshman who's senior with the same unit going across the board. Now, title publishing, airbook skills is just, is the competition. And then the last item is a IRS penalty that we have since two thousand sixteen. There was a answer filed by Mrs. Kenny back in twenty twenty. It was denied. I filed an answer last year. It was denied. And so I submitted another appeal. We're going to offer a compromise. So the penalty is one hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Interest accruing as well?
No. No, not at this time. I could get hit with the penalty first, and then.
Who was this penalty on? This wasn't the separate funds for board here.
It's a filing of the Affordable Care Act when it changed in twenty sixteen. But since then, they directed it. We've got some minor, minor penalties, two thousand, three thousand, which we can easily absorb. Someone will ask me for it to say, when I made my offering compromise in the last filing, I got us for pay the initial penalty. The fines, the fees are obviously comparable to the penalty, and we'll see what happens.
So we've paid it?
I'm not, I'm just looking to, if we do, if they, if they deny the appeal again, I'd rather be able just to pay it. We're gonna have to pay it for this.
Okay.
I don't think there's any more. This is our third, third round.
Attempted, tried to.
Final, final, final.
Yeah, and they might just check it right off.
Well, that's why I'm referring to it as an offering compromise, to state the, the obvious fact that we're a school district, right? We're Texas, we're exempt. Made an effort, directed it, we contracted with Jurassic to file the Affordable Care Act filings. We've not had a penalty, substantial penalty since twenty sixteen, so we made a direct action. It's a legitimate argument, so see if Bill can give the penalties, the financial fines.
All right, need a motion to approve the expansion, right? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? I oppose. And we didn't need the transfers, right?
Yes. So all of the transfers will cover those, those equipment purchases, and rather than do the whole list, unless you want me to. And then the two negative balances would be for a transfer of one thousand, seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars to the. Effective lines from the maintenance extraordinary basis. Carryover line.
Need a motion to approve?
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? I oppose. Okay, hi, student activity classical, Mr. Kitchen of the art club.
There's a request to. Form a art club student activity account, which the advisor who spoke and submitted to Mr. Rabello. Policy, and you would approve that. Every year you approve the student activity accounts. Since maybe this one is individual, so they have a place that they can fit the fundraising.
Need a motion to approve?
Motion made.
Need a second? All in favor? I oppose.
The next topic one is the actual student activity council account. It comes out, there's no, no issues with that.
We still have the classic two thousand twenty five.
Yeah, they just have to move it out into another.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the.
Okay, M, the FY twenty-two end of the year financial report.
This is the, for the audits for the federal awards program and the management letter. There's little significant material findings. Recommend they see the place on file. The management letters, easiest thing to read, if you want to read the management letter.
Yeah.
The financials are a little. We'll let you handle that. I always, I always like the management letter, it's usually about two pages that you can read. So that's my recommendation, to see the place on file.
Yeah. All right, and surplus of Mr. Wendy's equipment?
This is the auction listing for items, I would, metal fab, which are welders and advanced manufacturing, which are going to be some maids, various. That, some grinders. And there are also some, two items from the maintenance shop, which is the pickup truck. Wild truck. So those were a lot of the items that actually metal fab took out of the, out of the bin. Trailer, so they were already trying to get rid of stuff.
But any, but any, I'm sorry. Any equipment has to go through you. They can't just throw things out. Nothing we throw out, not supposed to be, correct? Two points.
A lot, yeah, I mean, it's, it's.
We're not just throwing things out.
We're looking at, we're looking at, you know, for instance, you know, even these, even these small welders, they'll, they'll get a couple hundred dollars. I mean, you can buy a new small, big order probably for four or five hundred probably. And this will probably get, get a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, but we'll get it. But they still file their, sort of, the filing.
I had somebody ask me a question about bidding. How, how do they pay for that? They said something about the.
They pay online.
They pay online?
Yeah.
Can they pay when they get here, or is it just all online?
No, the bidding is online.
Yeah.
And then they'll take an administrative fee out of it. And then once all, when, when the bidding closes, and for instance, the truck has gone, this is the third time, so they don't, they bid it, they win it. And they don't pay, you have two weeks to pay. It falls back to the second bidder. If the second bidder doesn't want it, and they call us and they ask us what they don't, just remove it, that's under the check.
Okay, so it's, it's when, when they put the bid in, I guess they have to put.
They start an account.
They start an account.
Yeah, so.
And that's always paid.
Yeah.
That was, that was a question.
Basically, you get a check at the end of the day.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I guess he wasn't sure if he paid directly to the school or goes through the auction. That's what he was probably getting.
Yeah, so when you, when you start your, when you start your account, you set up the password.
Yeah.
And then you put your credit card on there. And that's it. So then, bid again.
And what's the website for?
They charge you.
What's the website?
Auction International. Auction International. I think you should say a fire truck.
No, that's all.
It's only six hundred dollars. They take, but that's where it is, that's my print of the cell.
Oh, usually I would have given you six hundred bucks. I paid four hundred dollars just to pull my parking lot every time. Paul, you're in it for twenty-one years, maybe you could come help me.
Okay, a recommendation to approve the surplus. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? I oppose. Okay. Oh, missions acceptance update.
Sure, I'm keeping the committee informed as to acceptancees. The first is in the high school, uh, and again, if you're continuing to stay robust. We do have six hundred and ninety-seven students, people who have applied to Diamond. Right now, the accepted is still at three hundred and sixty-five. Mr. Chairman, we have talked about a number that this committee may want to take up tonight, of where that number is going to go, if it's going to be higher. So the class of twenty-seven. Is, uh, it's good right now, everything is good. Next week is, is placement testing. That would be our first time that we'll get some, some shakeout as to whether or not students really are coming to Diamond or not. If they don't show up for various reasons, they've now changed their mind, it's April, they're away on vacation, and so on, so on.
So it's tomorrow?
It is, it's next week, I'm sorry, all, all next week, all starting to be placement exams. Follow-ups are done by guidance after that to find out why they didn't show up. And then the interest has to be said by the student or the parent, yes, they're still coming, we forgot, whatever. But that's on the high school side. The number where I got that from is right towards the bottom versus total number of applications received. And that you see the number six, nine, seven, that's where we are. Does the committee wish to do anything with the number of, uh, accepted students, or do you want to hold that off, Mr. Jennings?
Yeah, we'll, 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 we'll hold that off.
You could, however way you want to do it.
All right.
I know we talked about it. I, I think I put it on your radar.
We'll, we'll put it on the agenda.
For the next one?
Absolutely.
When is the next round of acceptance going out?
Uh, the, they, that's kind of a, someone said, is it April twelve? No, there is no April twelfth, that's today's meeting, okay? After vacation, okay, there will be another round because now we got to start filling in the blanks. So we are looking probably at first week of May, comfortably, uh, after this week coming up. Guidance department is going to be working on various things, testing is done, everything gets sorted down. And now, where are still the blanks? I do know that as we're sitting here today, there are still twenty-five students who have not responded from the initial round, okay? And they're being tracked down.
So the three, three hundred and sixty-five will be seen excepting letters.
Correct, actually, they send out more than that, but they're looking for the number three sixty-five.
How many they send out?
I cannot tell you that number because I didn't ask that question. I wish I could, uh, but I will get that for you.
Um, do you know how many have denied or declined?
Can you get that data?
I don't want, yeah, I don't want to tell you a number and then it not be positive. I do know that there are twenty-five students, I was just told by Mrs. Miller, that have yet to respond, yes, no, whatever. I know that part.
Well, they're usually spelling four hundred.
What number were you looking at?
Myself?
Above the three sixty-five.
Three eighty-five. Three eighty, yeah, the committee normally has, and I asked this question to Mrs. Miller, that normally it's three sixty-five, that's outstanding. But I, then the committee usually takes another, a vote on how it's done, of three seventy-five. Uh, we have been talking about another number today, I sat with her and I said, the number I'm looking for is to be eighty-five. My vote going that high is to stem what happens in the transfers of going from sophomore to junior year of a little more retention. Can we substantiate that in the shops? Yes, the academic classrooms will be a little tight, okay? But we, we can substantiate that, we can, we can hang on to that.
And that's key. Dr. Warner approves of that? Because she's the one that deals with the teachers on that.
She does the academic schedule.
And, and I mean, my biggest problem is, is we're bringing in more students, but we're going to be offering only the big shops that can absorb them. So we have more disappointed kids who think they're going to come here and get into the primary shops as well, although that are the smallest shops we got.
That's where the exploratory program opens up a lot of eyes to students. As if there was a good number of students who go through exploratory thinking one thing and they end up in another. And that, we have found that, Mrs. Torres is here, maybe she'd be able to answer that, I won't put you on the spot, Mrs. Torres. But we do find that, uh, students do change their minds.
And did you have a breakdown, what you're looking for with the four communities?
I do not, I would.
Because that would be, I would, I would, I don't want to take the next fifteen or twenty off the list, I want to try to divide, divide it up.
There is, there is a formula that is divvied up by the committee, I asked that question. I was told that if it goes to ten more, then there is a, that the formula is applied to that. So this would be an additional ten formula, we'll go to that. So everything would be formulae.
The only thing I'm, I, the only thing I'm concerned about, Mr. Chairman, is waiting on the month, these kids are all getting answered, and they're starting looking at other schools. So I would prefer to, we're going to be adding more in over the next couple of weeks, I would prefer to add in these additional students now.
Sooner than not.
So they can, so they can look at what avenues they want to go down by.
Be beneficial? That's fair enough. If someone, at the, the guidance department and Mrs. Miller as director of admissions, she would say, just from a numbers point of view, right? Tell me how many students you want me to admit, and that's the number I will go for. She's, she's waiting on the number.
In the past, correct, if I'm wrong, the bypass list past three sixty-five doesn't necessarily follow the formula.
Correct, right, I can say.
So wouldn't, I mean.
That's why he said, that's why.
We split it up equally in the past.
That's why he was saying before.
When we had, yeah, when we, when we went to ten, it was, uh, two from each of the towns and then four from the city. Okay. So you would just increase it, right?
It would be eight, four, four, eight, four, four, four.
Yeah, yeah.
Be that way, just, again, keep the same proportion.
Yeah.
Okay, as opposed to do like twenty more from.
Correct. So I, I, I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we, um, decrease the three sixty-five to three eighty-five. Uh, with the advice of our superintendent, that, uh, we go to forever with eight more Swansea, Somerset, Westport with four more each. Over the limit they have already.
Okay, so who's going to do it anyway?
But we have to prove it to that here, though.
Okay.
I'll say.
Is that, all in favor? I, I oppose.
Thank you for setting that number and the formula that's used, that gives some great guidance, thank you.
All right, next is P, the LPN program update.
Again, continuing with the LPN that the committee has an interest in, uh, this scheme has done a really good, really good job of, uh, making the pushes to get the students there. Uh, I don't know if Laurie is on, is she?
She isn't.
Oh, thank you. Miss Keen, if you're on, I'd rather have you report out on this. Well, she's coming on, you do see that, there's some highlights there.
Can you hand me?
Yes, we can, Miss Keen.
Okay, so I'm going to give you the update. So currently, we have twenty-six admissions for next year. We only have five pending payments, everybody else has paid their seat fee. We have thirteen in district out of the twenty-six. I have seven interviews next week and twenty people scheduled to take the entrance exam on April eighteenth. In May, I have three T's entrance exams because of the number of people that are coming now. We had to increase the number of times I give it so that I can take them in. Recruitment is still ongoing, I'm doing info sessions two times a month and there's been people signing up and coming. We ran a, a commercial, thirty-second commercial on NBC ten. Uh, it's going from April tenth to May tenth, and that has been drumming up some interest as well, that was funded through Perkins four fifty-three. Our Facebook page is generating a few inquiries as well, it's often like any time of the day. I'm working currently with the state, the, the Department of Developmental Services, they're paying up to eighteen thousand dollars for, um, twenty-five students to come into PN programs. So we're trying to drum up some business there as well. And faculty, I'm still, I still continue down to faculty that are out on LOAs. And we today, um, have hired a new person to fill one of the full-time positions that I had open. But we're doing well with what we have over there and continuing just to recruit and get as many people in.
On the chairman, out of the twenty-six, uh, how many are part-time, how many are full-time?
So currently, we have nine part-time and the rest are full-time. So seventeen full-time, nine part-time.
And what's a full complement for you?
Uh, for this year, my goal is forty full-time and twenty part-time.
And our staff can end eleven?
Yes, we can.
I, I, I did see the commercial on, on channel ten.
Oh, awesome, good, I'm glad you saw it.
Very nice, very nice.
Thank you.
Nothing to say, I've heard people praise about Miss Ian, who has said right from the get-go, her, her entire being was to get more students in the program. Advertise it, recruit, retain, uh, and she is hitting, she's, she's hitting that number. She's doing, and I do want to point out, all this is why I've been down to faculty members, to full-time faculty members. So they have picked up the slack down there and they're working, there is no slack to pick up, but they have picked up whatever there is down there, and they are making it work.
All right, good, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Miss Keen, good work.
All right, uh, Q, we have the grievance subcommittee report.
Okay, uh, we met, we, we had agreements here for them, we'll turn it over to, uh, our attorney.
Um, on the first one, SY two thousand twenty-three dash two, DTA Sylvia, February eighth meeting, um. No vote is necessary, no report, that was settled, so there's no action to be taken. On SY two thousand twenty-three dash three, DTA Sylvia School Nurse, at this point in time, it's a recommendation, uh, unanimous recommendation of two to zero. Mister, um, Mister Bacon abstained because of his affiliation with the actual hiring process. They voted unanimously to permit to the full committee for a full committee vote, which we say we cannot vote to reject the grievance.
I don't think there's anything to add to it, I think, uh, we, we did hear, um, I did speak with her a little bit and her qualifications, uh, are there. You know, she, she, for, be a T to, as a teacher that she's here, but it's our decision to hire a nurse. And, um, we had a subcommittee that we relied upon and, uh, we take their recommendations strongly. And, um, I, I don't think we can, we should override, uh, recreation that was done by, uh, by our subcommittee. I think they made a good judgment, I talked to Mr. Beacon a little bit during the, uh, uh, during executive session, and he explained why the choices were made, and I wanted to make sure we doubted the rights of our teachers, one of the things is she's not certified. But the, the other four that we cut out were not certified, and we selected two certified and two that were certified, my correct, being correct. And, um, so it's not like we, we cut out, and then, and then he did the interviews according to, uh, the interview. And, uh, yeah, they unanimously, I, I understand, Mr. Bentley said, they, uh, they voted in favor of, um, the lady that we hired. And, um, because she's going through a, uh, a, like, safe working, we, uh, another diamond student in the future here. She's, uh, she's going to stop her, uh, her job here in September. And, uh, as, uh, Mr. Bello said, he hired a interim, uh, nurse that, um, has been working with our, uh, our, uh, other nurse since, uh, the, uh, the January, I believe. And, um, she's going to, she volunteered to stay, wants to stay until, uh, the end of the school year. So I think because of the kids with all that meds and this girl's already on point with it, and all the other obstacles that come with being a nurse in the school, which is a very difficult job. We make a recommendation, uh, Mr. Chairman and myself, to not, uh, to keep, uh, to just, uh, not, not.
To deny the grievance.
Deny the grievance, thank you.
Mr. Bacon, do you want to say something else?
No, I think, uh, the subcommittee, we put together a good, good array of questions for all, uh, the interviewees. I think we had a good pool of candidates, we had to have a consult together for which we narrowed down to those four minutes. They were all very good, they all had their attributes, uh, some, some directions, others in other directions. And, uh, I think in general, we all unanimously felt, um, you know, the right choice at this point in time. And I stand firm with that. So.
All right. Anything else? No. Okay.
So with that, I mean, we'll, maybe with that, I made the recommendation to, uh, to deny the grievance of SY two zero two three dash three.
I have a motion, need a second?
Second.
All in favor? I oppose. Our house building facility subcommittee, Mr.?
We've had Mr. Torres patiently waiting over here, um, and, um, I don't know if you could share what you share with us, uh, about the, uh, installing and bring that up for us. Mr. Torres, this is your baby, go ahead and.
Sure, so on the project community update, um, one of our largest and most proud, um, of our projects is the project playhouse for Rosemary's Fish Kids. In conjunction with Bryant, and, um, our students just outdid themselves, uh, with this project. The home revealed at Bryant this week, and it was Sophia, she's a three-year-old little girl, and her dad is a Diamond alumni. And we did not know that.
That we did not know that.
We did not know that until the morning of. And his nephew happens to be a student in HVAC as well. So, um, it went to this little girl and they were over the moon with it, and we're so proud of our students. Just to give you some quick information, if you take a look at the building, the white, that was the house at the Rhode Island Home Show, if anybody went to the Rhode Island Home Show. Um, so that is the house staged.
I asked her who did this. Because I was, I wanted to come to my gardening, but.
So Diamond, um, was invited to participate in the setup at the Rhode Island Home Show. So we had a busload of, uh, students and faculty that went there and helped set the gardens and set up other areas. So this is the house staged there. The facade is stucco, Mr. Vitello, um, reached out to one of his industry partners, they came in, taught students how to do stucco. The rocks that you see are, uh, foam insulation that were carved, and then HVAC torched them to give them the shape and the depth. Obviously, the painting, the cupola was put together by, uh, and fabricated by metal fab, painted by auto collision. Can't see it in this picture, but on the other side, there are solar panels, um, that provides the, um, electricity for the inside of the, um, house. And the design, we made a pitch to the graphic and building properties, uh, business tech students, uh, they came up with the designs, uh, the little girls likes. And we chose one and the draft team threw it up. So we're very, very proud of it.
So I ran out of things, I ran out of things, that was ten of our shops involved.
Well, it's integration, you know, and collaboration.
And the young girl now, uh, just went to, from here, it went to.
To her yard, to her backyard.
All right.
And at the home show, everybody wanted to know how they could buy it.
You don't think it's listed as plumbing?
Yeah, and if we can't buy that one, can you build this one? We got a lot of requests, she's, she sheds.
Very nice.
Family was still larger.
Okay, and with that, um, we, um, we have several of the projects that the community has been doing. One, uh, right now, we're working up at the cemetery in Westport.
Correct, correct, plumbing is there, uh, doing a lot of trenching and putting in those lines for the bathroom. And, um, the building property is wrapping up the construction.
And we have Somerset, the water department building.
Correct, they, they completed that, yeah, they completed that.
So if you look at your list, there's several projects from all four communities that have been accomplished or, um, doing now or will be finished. Next year, I think, Case School High, we just fitted four cabinets for the nursing office. Somerset High School, we're finishing up the carpentry, uh, the trophy cases, uh, and, um, several other, look at your lists, have been done already. It's great that we're getting all four communities. Mr. Torres does a great job getting them all together, thank you.
Very good, thank you, all right. Moving on to S, the sick bank, uh, subcommittee, Dr. Nero.
So the subcommittee had an opportunity to meet earlier this week.
One second, hold on one second, I'm sorry.
What is it?
The twenty-two, twenty-three house building, uh, I'm sorry, just, just so we, we can get it out there, maybe somebody else would be interested, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three house building project. Uh, right now, Maria, they are, at what stage?
We are wrapping up, plumbing just has to go out to finish up the plumbing and then we install the cabinetry, we're finishing up a little deck outside. To gain entrance, uh, from the side of the building into the house, electricity has to switch out a plug. Electricity has to switch out a plug, and then we have just some touch-up painting, so first week of May, we should be wrapped up.
That was in addition to the house in Swansea for people of corporate.
Yep, then we'll get the final inspection.
And the twenty-three, twenty-four house building project update, we, we have nothing at this time. We're still advertising, and also, Mrs. Torres and several other people that are attorney are going to meet to put together, to edit the policy we have now. We should have some for you for that speech.
Just to, just to, based on, one more thing for your information, I did go out to Bayco's Bank and have a meeting with the president and CEO, Mr. Graham. You know, talking about our projects, and so they're going to keep this in mind, in the event that they had some candidates that maybe just missed being out there. Can help them, or even maybe contractors, some builders that they can't get their contractor, they can't get their first and second choice builder, and they happen to set up for third, fourth, and fifth. You know, contractors, to see if they might be interested, so.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, back to you, Dr. Nero.
Yes, so the subcommittee had the opportunity to meet early this week with regards to two members of the district requesting a, an absence. And they did have the appropriate documentations from their medical doctors indicating that the request was considered usual, reasonable, and necessary. So on that conclusion meeting, they're appropriate to approve their request.
Case, which we got, just so, but it's a sickly bank tradition, they just have an absentee.
Okay, she's back, but I just don't want anybody at home to say something.
And the union is okay, this is one.
You, the union got there to understand that they worked before. Doctor, Jim, and it was, they had the medical documentation to back up their request.
Correct. All right, recommendation to accept the recommendation from me, need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? All right, T, the principal report, this thing over Bella.
Thank you, Jennings, so there's a lot here, but I'd like to just highlight a few important ones. That first one, right back to our mission of preparing students for life. We hosted two Credit for Life fairs partnering up with Bayco's Bank, where senior students balanced checkbooks. We even had a station to learn how to tie their own ties, just really a life-ready event for our senior students, and it went really well. Four times over the part, the past month in March, District Attorney Tom Quinn has joined us at Diamond. He's held presentations for students, talking about the legal system, consequences for risky behavior. And he also held two parent forums for all parents regarding the legal system as well. So he's joined us four times in the month, month of March, we appreciate District Attorney Tom. We also hosted Heron Wellness and Nick Carrier to talk above drinking drugs and addiction with our students. Again, all falling under the life-ready upon graduation mission. On March sixteenth, we hosted the Fall River Youth of the Year. Congratulations to CJ Mendez, Abigail Santos, and Addison Pereira on their nominations, it was a great event, highlighting the hard work of our students. Our culinary students participated, participated in a bake-off up at Gillette Stadium, and two of our students, Taylor Rogers won third place. And Catherine Antunes won second place, again, a statewide baking competition at Gillette, just back on the map again, congratulations to them. And then finally, Mr. Bentley's first Accepted Students Night on March thirtieth. We held Accepted Students Night, and hundreds of parents and students attended, Diamond apparel sold out. And we actually had two Q and A forums where we had current and alumni students talking and answering questions for these prospective students. But it was Mr. Bentley's first, and it was really well, it went really well.
I wouldn't say it's his first.
It was.
This was not even in the worst, when I was here in a part of life and then left and then came back, and I was very impressed. For the students who have committed to Diamond, they came once again to see shops and talk to instructors, it goes Russian. They all got a T-shirt, a great T-shirt, that said, like, class of twenty twenty-seven, smiles. I met a lot of new students, so I don't know yet, I met a lot of pasts who I had students. And I even met someone who came in to say, and this is my grandson. And on that, I just smiled, okay, saying, okay, time does move on, but it was a very impressive night, it was very impressive.
Very good. Thank you, any questions, Mr. Vallow?
Before I leave, I'll be saying that to you, you were my teacher, so I'll be saying my granddaughter.
Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Just highlighting, four, four quick bullet, Rosemary's wishes, we've already hit upon that. My only comment on that is that the reveal was something special, they have in there happiness coupled with tears, very emotional. We do have a very special night coming up tomorrow night, recognizing one of our seniors, Hannah Martin. She is Diamond's selection to be the outstanding vocational student at the state level. And this is going to be a celebration of achievement at Mechanics Hall in Worcester, and that is taking place tomorrow night. Keeping in the same celebration, I was lucky and happy enough to go to Holy Cross College in Worcester on April the third. Where two of our teachers were recognized for excellence in teaching AP courses by a very elite group. Erin Smith, math, Tracy Collins, and English, were recognized by their peers and also by their mentors for the work that they do with advanced placement courses. And we do have coming up, to keep on under the radar, scheduled for May fourth, Diamond will be represented by Mrs. Manada, should be, and Mr. DiBiaseo at the day on the table. I think Mr. DiBiaseo, we want to get together both in, in order to figure out who we're going to see. Today. They have made a call, but we'll be, we'll be prior to that, we'll get some communication.
We'll, we'll talk after, get a date.
One of the things I want to be sure is that they're going to be there.
Well, and that's, exactly, we don't want to go there just to go.
Well, I'll check with Pat and Michael, make sure that.
We'll set a date to meet here first, just to collaborate, and then on May fourth, we'll talk about that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
If you're up for breakfast, we have a great breakfast, pancakes, we have a great breakfast now.
I thought it was two of them. Serves every day, or?
Yes, something new started.
Tuesdays, Thursdays, from eight thirty to ten AM.
Oh, Tuesday.
Or just Tuesdays and Thursdays?
Is it open to all?
Yeah, Tuesdays and Thursdays.
We have a date of outstanding vocational students. But here, to Diamond, it is. May.
Should be on the calendar of events. Yeah. Yeah. Thursday, the meeting.
That's a big white.
Yeah, no. All right, our next school committee meeting is scheduled for maybe eleven. Might have to reschedule that. I won't, I won't be around, so we'll send something out.
Assistant, assistant chair meets.
Who's your vice chair?
Yeah, I need him.
All right, let's see, is there anything else, forty-eight hours?
No.
No. And let's see, correspondence, we have one from the twenty twenty-three, MSC Mass Conference. So they're looking, because of Veterans Day next year, right? It's, it's on a Saturday, so they're moving, they're scheduled back a day?
Okay.
See the correspondence?
Oh, yeah, I do.
So, and, and the Thursday is our school committee meeting. So next year, we'll have to just make note of that, when we do the calendar of events for next year.
Yeah, that's November.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
The school committee, the calendar for next year has been constructed by Mr. Vallow, it just needs to be finalized, so we can look at that.
Yeah.
Start putting it up.
Done it.
Yeah. All right, do we have a reason?
I'll vote executive secretary.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Wait a second, all in favor?
Aye.